Where's, where's Mr. Tinkle?
He's tinkling.
Is in the tinkle?
Here he is.
We need an emotion to... Just open it. Now, where did Mr. Banks go?
He was trying to give you that.
Chris? I need Mr. Banks now.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm losing supervisors left and right.
Pass that over to Chris, would you please?
Madam Chairman, why don't you bring the board back into the session?
I'm here.
It would be appropriate to ask for a motion to open the public hearing on the...
Let me do that. Let me calm the room. I need to... I'm bringing the meeting back to order, so please... And for those of you that have just recently come in, if you have one of these, please turn it to silent so we don't have phones ringing in the middle of the meeting. And...
I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So, this is a public hearing on the adoption of fiscal year 2018 budget.
Yes.
And we're gonna let Stephen Blum make a little statement here before we go to public comment.
Okay, Stephen Blum, Seven Trent. As mentioned, today we'll be adopting the budget as well as the assessments. I'm just gonna do a top-level overview of some of the numbers, including looking at each of the funds. On, on the screen there is the assessment chart, which at the end of the day is gonna tell you what the assessment amounts are per EAU. I will go through that a little bit here, as well as talk about the total spending for each of the funds, and then what that equates to in terms of assessments and comparing it to the prior year. Kind of starting with, with the general fund. Overall, the general fund is about $310,000 more for fiscal year 2018 compared to 2017. Now, in going through that spending and kind of looking at what the types of categories are, the majority of that money is going towards additional repairs and maintenance for the general fund in terms of whether it's wetlands, stormwater, parks, all the different areas. Most of that is going towards repair and maintenance. There is now included in there, as a result of the last meeting, money to cover the assessment methodology. We had talked about that at the last meeting to add that. So, we have that covered in there as well. That's $25,000 of the 310. And then again, like I said, it's, it's mostly made up the rest of this, of repair and maintenance, different line items we've had to add. Now, in terms of what that means per EAU in the assessments, last year for the general fund, it was $371.67 per EAU. Moving forward for 2018 with this additional spending, it's gonna be $420.64 per EAU. Now, it's important to keep in mind that the numbers that I just told you did is not include the Lake Bank restoration. I will cover that separately. This is strictly what we would call the core general fund operations and maintenance. Now, I'm looking at the next larger fund here, which is the Pelican Preserve. For the Pelican Preserve, the spending increased from between 2017 to next year, 2018. It's about $58,000. That increase, now again, kind of looking at that on a per EAU basis, currently this year in 2017, the total ERU, per ERU amount is $942.66. For next year, it'll be $961.96, which is about a 2.05% increase. And again, this, these are the numbers for the Pelican Preserve Fund and the related areas that are... The second half of the chart that you see up there is Pelican Preserve. The first half is Area 1 and 2, which would cover the general fund. It covers the Lake Bank Restoration, covers Stony Brook, as well as the Town Lakes Fund. So, that's kind of how that chart breaks out. Okay, the next one I'll cover is the Lake Bank Restoration. It was mentioned earlier that what the amount that was approved was $6 million in our previous discussions in budget. The budget you have in front of you includes up to $8 million in terms of the total project. And then correspondently, in terms of the assessments, it includes enough to cover the principal and interest as well as any reserve that's required as a part of a state revolving loan. As a result, the increase in terms of the bottom-line expenditures, not including the actual project costs, just principal and interest payments, is about $189,000, roughly, getting down to the assessments. This year, it's $66.44, $66.44. With this increase, it would be $97.10. And again, same thing, this is per EAU. And just, just kind of point out, when I say per EAU, normally one residential is one EAU per unit. Okay. I'll cover Stony Brook Fund next. Stony Brook, the spending is, increase is very small. It's about $6,300. Again, turning to the assessments, this year, it was $534.76 per EAU. Next year, or current, moving forward with the budget, it would be $543.19. That's about a 1.58% increase. Again, that is for Stony Brook Fund. The Town Lakes Fund has no change in terms of spending or the assessments. And the same thing for the Area 1 and 2 Debt Service Fund. No change in spending, no change in the assessment amount. The last fund, which is the Enterprise Fund, that fund obviously is, is funded with water irrigation, sewer rates and billings, so it is not per se an assessment. But to give you some numbers on that, the increase from 2017 to 2018 in terms of spending would be $471,337. It's a little bit under 11% increase in terms of it. The majority of that increase would go towards with the water and the sewer going up in terms of revenue and usage, so will be spending in terms of the bottom line as well. So, that's kind of what that one's going to. Those are very top-level numbers. How we can go through any of the funds or take any questions and go through there? I just wanted to make sure everyone would be aware of kind of where the increases would fall in terms of the different funds.
Stephen, just to make sure everybody understands, so the increase, or the anticipated increase of the SRF debt from $6 million to $8 million to accommodate what we believe to be the next eight ponds, which closes out Phase 1, has a net impact of $30 ballpark in this budget increase.
Correct. Again, that assumes, you know, we talked about the $4.4 million, meaning you would use the differential between the $4.4 and the $6, and another $2, and that would finish out those, that next...
And we said earlier, $3.4 to $3.5 is in...
Correct, and that was kind of in line with that, and again...
That's included in these numbers, yes.
Now, it's important to note, if, you know, the savings you're talking about or the changes in the scope, we're only gonna assess, once this loan kicks in, what is spent. So, if you don't spend the $3.4 and you spend, I forget what the difference was, a million dollars, you're not gonna assess that extra million dollars when you start setting up the amortization of the loan. That savings will get forwarded to the residents immediately.
But worst-case scenario is that it's $79 and some change, 30...
Yes.
30 out of 8.
For sure.
38% is associated with the SRF.
For sure, in year 1, once this, once this is adopted, first year would definitely be $30.65. Once the project is completed, if there are savings, then it would be adjusted accordingly.
Anybody else have any questions for Steve? Okay, and I, this time we'll open it up for public comment. Does anybody have, any public have any comment?
And Madam Chairman, if you could mention also that to the extent that anyone wishes to address the board, provide public comment and fill out the speakers list.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
I think they all heard that. I don't see anybody rushing up to the podium to speak.
If you had one, I'd wonder where everybody lives and whether it's Pelican Preserve or Gateway.
If they want to...
Because we do have totally different costs.
We don't have anybody that's...
We need to remind, we, we had a public hearing about, it was four weeks ago.
On the left. So...
And there's time.
Yeah.
So, we'll give everybody a second.
Give us one second, I think, Chris. You can do that afterward. Stephen, will you set the timer also, please?
We do have a three-minute time limit.
Oh, boy.
It gets into back and forth then.
And if you'll give us your name and what community you're from.
Terry Chawl in Daniel's Preserve. And I didn't break the position, I didn't run up. And I came a little late, so I apologize for that, and I, I hope that I don't cover anything that you already discussed. If I have, just, if I do, then advise me that. But my main concern here, it looks like there's about an 18% increase in all this. Is, is anybody, I know how government works, is anybody challenging these amounts? Or is it just, we do things, whatever it costs, we just add it to the budget and the taxpayers will pay for it? Is anybody questioning, do you really need a 15% increase in your budget? If you did things horribly bad last year, we're gonna do the same thing next year, plus we're gonna throw in another 10%? Does anybody question these values? Is anybody trying to hold the line on expenses?
Go ahead.
And that's one thing, I also have a letter from a fellow that I was gonna read too, that is asking almost the same questions, justification for the increase and the authority on increase and not decrease.
And I'll have to say that, as Stephen was mentioning, the majority of this going into the general fund is operation and maintenance and repairs. If you look at the condition of some of the facilities, the bathrooms, at the pool, they just aren't safe, and there's things here, and I don't wanna use that old term, kicking the can down the road, but there's been so much deferred maintenance going on, is that's where this is coming in. The condition of the bathrooms and the snack bars and outdated toilets and outdated facilities. So, that's what we're trying to do, and I also mentioned that we're also putting a lot of effort into looking for cost savings, and I mean down to nickels and dimes, where people at the pool were buying filters locally, and I say, are you getting prices for these? Quarterly, they're buying them at $3,200, so we went online and found them delivered for $1,950. So, that's a $4,000 savings.
And that's, and you're involved in the maintenance?
Yes, sir, and we're looking, we had a consultant that was doing water sampling for us, and we dropped him from doing that. We're doing it in-house, and we're literally looking at cost savings. If you go out and buy it, I tell the staff, treat the money like it's your money, not like it's someone else. So, we are, we are making those efforts, but that big increase really is deferred maintenance. And, and it's, it's unfortunate that I guess, you know, we're spending the money at the pool because a ton of people don't use the pool, but if you went up there, I, I think I'd use the term embarrassed to look at the tile and the toilets and the doors rusting and falling off the hinges, and to go up there and do this kind of work, to re-tile in the bathrooms, it's $100,000. So, and, and actually, the swimming pool, a lot of our assessment takes up $38.16.
So, you're on the maintenance side, so...
Both sides.
He's our district manager.
Yeah, it's all, it's all maintenance.
He sees it all, yeah.
And what about the road, do you cover like the road for Daniel's Preserve, that, the roads in there? Is that...
Those are CDD roads.
Daniel's Preserve?
Yes, it's HOA.
Probably your HOA.
That's HOA?
That's your HOAs inside the gate.
Okay.
And then the road that you come out to belongs to, used to belong to, a Worthington POA, Property Owners Association, that has since gone defunct. So, nobody is really addressing that road. We wanna talk about it as a, a future issue to resolve. But inside Daniel's Preserve, your roads are under your CDD.
Okay, so...
Uh, HOA.
I'm sorry, your HOA.
And I'm new, relatively new to this, as probably a number of people are, so this gateway services just covers what?
Roads and drainage and recreation would be what? Uh, the, we operate the utility system, the water sewer and irrigation system.
The ponds?
Yes, that's part of the stormwater system.
Is it? Is it not reasonable to, to ask if we could, if people could kayak on those ponds? Is that a dangerous thing?
It's south...
Is that gonna create waves in your roads?
South Florida Water Management will not allow it because there's stormwater retention ponds. They're not recreational lakes.
So, if you kayak on stormwater, it's gonna damage the water somehow, or what?
Like damage your kayak.
Well, that, it's not exactly scope for budgeting purposes.
It's prohibited, that's...
For what?
It's prohibited by a state entity, so...
Ah, for government, okay. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, I appreciate your comment. I appreciate seeing all the folks here.
Go ahead, Ken.
Terry, I wanted to say, we've been discussing the budget for three to four meetings now, and we have reduced some of the amounts in the budget. We voted to reduce some things so that you know that we're not just putting out the budget as-is. We have talked about it, and we have reduced some of the expenses.
Well, that's appreciated. I'm sure everyone here will appreciate that. I, I just, you know, you see this, I don't, I haven't seen one, this is probably the first one I looked at, but it seems like a good amount. I mean, 18%, if you did that in five years, you'd double the, the cost, you know? I mean, that's...
But have you looked at the items, I mean, because you don't have history, you don't see the, each individual item, what we're doing, what we're maintaining, the history? I mean, if you just look at the face value of the increase, 18% seems like a lot. But when you stack it against all the things that we have done and what Chris has been, and his staff have been able to accomplish, you know, this year and moving forward, you would say, wow, that's a, you know, just a, you know, a $20 increase quarterly for next year to, to make enhancements to our infrastructure, ponds and all the things, you said, wow, but they're really doing a good job. What we want you to say is they're doing a good job of managing our budget and fixing all the things that have been neglected for 10, 15 years.
How many homes are in this, this gateway services company?
Six, 6,200, what we call ERUs in the gateway component. That would be everything but Pelican Preserve, 6,200. That includes commercials, rate, actual houses, about 4,800, 4,900 of that.
But needless to say, if I take that times $3,500, $3,800 a unit, is a chunk of money. So, you guys are dealing with a lot of money here.
Yes, sir, millions.
Okay.
So, it can't be...
Millions and millions of dollars, tens of millions probably.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I think we have somebody else that wishes to speak. Will you?
Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Cortez, and 12379 Motte Creek Lane.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'm a little confused on this collection, because it says that for me, it's gonna be $1,060.93. I wish you understand that. Like, right now, I see some of my neighbors have a bigger house than I have, and I paid $4,300 in taxes last year, and they paying $3,500 and $3,400. So, I, I just don't know what is correlation on this. And now it says it's almost $1,000. So, that means every year it's gonna be something like this. Now, which one is the pool that you're talking about that have to be fixed?
It's the, it's a commons pool that's on Gateway Boulevard. And what you're talking about when you go to pay the county is there's ad valorem taxes, which is the value of your property, and there's non-ad valorem, which is just per unit.
Okay.
And what this is, is per unit.
Okay, in other words...
Every home in Stony Brook is saying, paying the same amount to the CDD. Yours is indifferent than your next-door neighbor's.
That's gonna be included?
That's, yes, that's correct.
In other words, this is gonna be included in this year's taxes?
That's correct.
So, that mean that the tax is gonna up again?
No, you're, well...
That's a little confused. I just want clarification.
They'll go up $88.6.
So, that's gonna be every year the same thing?
Make sure it's clear on this.
Because I'm a little confused.
There's two different taxes we're talking about.
Okay.
But they're all paid at the county.
We have an assessment that shows up on your, your tax deal at the end of the year as a non-ad valorem.
That's correct.
Assessment, assessment. Your property tax that all of us just got the notification from?
Right.
That for your own property, that has nothing to do with this.
Okay, that's what I wanna know, because also in that one, it said that I, last year, I was supposed to pay $3,200, and they came up with a tax of $4,300.
That's a Lee County issue.
That's...
Yeah, we're gonna have to go to county. Okay, so this is for the pool that we don't use. Whoever don't use the pool in any way, we have to fix it.
It's a gateway, oh, yes, it's a CDD-owned pool.
But that small money portion of pool repair?
Yeah.
Yes, there, you will, everyone has to pay some...
So, every year, we're gonna have this pool repaired or something else different?
It'd be something else different because you're running a utility and it doesn't last forever. And that's, I don't think Chris could've said it any better. In fact, he was politically correct in what he said. It wasn't deferred maintenance. It was kick the can down the road maintenance, and we're all paying for what should've been done.
Exactly, exactly. That's what I've seen, because of the, the same thing where I live, you know? Right now, we have to pay extra because they didn't do any maintenance on it. So, whoever came later have to pay for something else that you guys supposed to, to be watching before, or whoever it was, I, I'm talking about you guys, but I'm talking about whoever was there before. So, they didn't pay attention, and now we paying the consequences.
You couldn't have said it any better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Was there anybody else that wanted to speak at the public hearing?
Do I have to stand up?
Yes.
Well, we'll answer your question.
Oh, I'm sorry. But if we're paying now $438 for the CDD every year, are you saying that we'll add an additional $120 on?
If you're, if you're in Hidden Lakes, which is in Gateway Greens, you're under the one that's the residential under Area 1 and 2, you're currently paying $438. It's going to, projected to go to $517.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with any of your HOA payments whatsoever.
Right.
This is totally separate. This is just the assessment for the operation and maintenance of the CDD.
Right, okay, so where on that form, is it showing that it's $30 a quarter, or isn't it? No.
It's not payable quarterly. It's payable on your tax bill, the non-ad valorem assessment. And I think what the discussion was, that the increase was $30 per equivalent unit as to the Lake Bank Restoration project.
For the lake portion of the project. I'm trying to explain to everybody, this $79, $30 of it is purely the lake project caused.
Oh, I see.
The other 49 is operational and deferred maintenance that Chris was talking about earlier.
Okay, so it's gonna be an additional $320, or...
No, the numbers are 5, if you see the column under Area 1 and 2 Residential?
Pull the column up out there, Chris, Kenny, yeah.
This is the current fiscal year message proposed of the construction for single-family homes for each individual condominium in Gateway proper, not Pelican Preserve.
When you get your tax form in October, you'll, you'll see it has all the costs down there, and it gives you the opportunity to pay it. You pay it in November, you pay less. You wait till April, you pay a lot more. But if you look at the very bottom of it, you will see the non-ad valorem assessment that is included, which covers this number, and it should be, if nothing changes and is approved, $517.74.
And any other, if, if your property that there's a debt service assessment, that'll be on there also. And the Lee County Garbage Assessment is there, and you see other assessments. It's all on your tax bill.
It's, it's kinda confusing the way Lee County did it, but they, they couldn't because they didn't have our information. The one you just got in the paper, all of us got in the paper this week, that didn't include this because obviously we haven't approved it yet.
No, it, it would not include it anyways because that's a...
That's a Lee County...
No, that's an ad valorem tax notice only. It's nothing to do with the special...
Arms are separate.
Correct.
And ma'am, if you would, I'd ask you to give your name and the community you live in, if you'd step back to the podium, because we didn't get that. That's okay. Debbie Novakoff, Hidden Lakes. Thank you. Anybody else? And if you'd start with your name and the community.
Eric Rosen, 12676 Astor Place, Hampton Park. A question I have, and I thank you for clarifying a lot of this stuff because it is very confusing. The only other question I have is, and I think I, is Chris here? I, I spoke with you a few times.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you were very good, very helpful, but there was another part of the whole lake thing that you talked, was like a $20 million addition?
Right.
And I didn't know where that stood. And my second question is, are you satisfied with what they've done with the lakes? Because I've seen some of the stuff in Hampton Park, and I saw all the, the webbing they put in just float away. So, I'm just curious as to where that stands and how that's gonna impact us on taxes. And I remember you saying if it was a 20-year thing or something like that.
And Chris, I'll let you handle the dollar figure, but I'm gonna let you know that the work that's being done in Hampton Park is being done by Lennar. It is not being done by the CDD, so we don't have any control of that.
Thanks, that's good.
At this point in time.
If you have a complaint, I'm sure Chris would be more than happy to give you Lennar's email address or something.
Believe me, I wouldn't be shy to send him something, but...
And the number of people in the audience we've worked with at Hampton Park, and one thing we're trying to stress with the developer, is that those ponds need to be in permitted condition before the CDD will accept it, meaning they need the laterals, they need the wetlands plants, they need the proper slope. And when they're in the condition as they were designed and signed off by the engineer, then we'll talk to you about assuming responsibility.
But they're not there, and, and the other thing is that $20 million you mentioned, that didn't include any of that?
No, the, the $20 million was basically, we talked about the $6 million that the board's already approved. They looked in this budget bumping that to 8. They have a bond validation which will allow them to borrow, which would finish hopefully all the ponds in the community. But that would be for later phases at a later time, and it would have to go in front of a board and a public hearing.
Appreciate it. I just wanna let you guys know, I gave him a hard time about the dog park, but he's been great. I mean, really, to explain everything, so we really appreciate it. Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I get to fill one of these out. You wanna pick?
I think there was one more, one more.
I was gonna say, just like... If I could write?
Yeah, no, no, I assumed that.
Good evening, Board. My name is Gary Mayer. I live in 13308 Bristol Parkway, just down the road from Griffin here. I feel like I'm talking into McDonald's microphone here. I'm just gonna move it a little bit. Okay, hold the onions.
You want fries with that?
Hold onions, please. I have bad breath on the mic. I had some clarity just a few minutes ago on what's going to cost and how much. I'm still a little confused, and I just need to get some clarification from the board on this. As living in Gateway, and I, and I love the community and I love where I live, the however, as I'm on a fixed budget, we all are at some point in time, frozen pension, frozen social security. So, with that being said, where is this hitting me in my pocket a month? I got some clarity a few minutes ago on it. It is actually, and I'm circling here, $517.47. Is that a, that's a year?
Yes, sir.
So, what does it break down to a month? Is that $15,145 a month?
That'd be about $45 a month.
$45 a month. And is this going to be ongoing now? Because again, we were at that $24 million proposal at the last, the church meeting. I didn't think that this was even coming close to that. So, this $5, $517.47 is just the beginning of this?
But remember at the church meeting, we indicated that there are two things that we had to get done. First thing is that we had to get a change to allow us to borrow money for 20 years instead of 5, to be able to spread the cost. We just are going through that process right now and hope to achieve that. We also told you that, at that meeting, that based on our projections, if we did all the ponds, and based on the estimated cost per pond, or cost per pond... and based on the estimated cost per pond or cost per foot of pond, we guesstimated that it would be around, could be around twenty million dollars. And we told everybody that if it, worst case scenario, had to go to twenty million dollars, the ramification was equal to about two hundred dollars per year per lot.
Okay. And I understood that at the last meeting. Thank you very much.
And that's where we're at.
Because there was a lot of problems with the square footage cost being extremely high and other bids could come in lower. Okay, so we'll table that at the moment. So at this point in time, it's forty-five dollars a month for next year's budget?
That's your budget. That, that would be for your budgeting purposes, but you pay that with your tax as a one-time payment.
Okay. So the one-shot deal would be one, five seventeen for the year then, for two thousand eighteen coming?
If you live in residential?
Bristol Park.
Yes.
You're, you're good.
Yeah.
So that would be the residential area on this notice that was sent.
Yes, sir.
So this year, I'll be here with this. Now, this is going to continue as a snowball every year, five, six, seven hundred dollars a year's assessments?
Well, it's going to go up every year. It'd be lying to you if it didn't for one reason. We're operating a business and we're operating a utility and we're living with the fact that it wasn't operated right to begin with. So we're going to be incurring costs. What we're trying to do is to manage the amount of the increase goes up.
And that's understood and, you know, you do, you know, a great job out there trying to handle the reins of such a big horse. So to be said with that, just this year, and this would be two thousand eighteen, we're going to say forty-five at five seventeen forty-seven. And then next year, we can brace myself again to see you to say that the chair will rock and we're going to go for more again next year then. All right. I guess that's a, so the lake project is not entailed in this bottom line?
A portion of it is.
A portion of it is.
Yes, it is. The original, original six million dollars was in there last year. If you all recall, we got hit with a sixty-five dollar increase, plus or minus.
Spread out over twenty years, I remember that.
Yeah, it's per year, but that, that was the increase, part of the increase last year. This year, the lake component of it is thirty dollars.
Okay.
Per, per lot.
On top, so the bottom line is, and then thank you for your time again. I appreciate it. Bottom line is, I'm just going to get it. It would hit five seventeen for whatever the change was. We don't have to reiterate on that for this year's tax budget of two thousand eighteen. Next year, this could go on. And what is left of the budgets from last year that I'm still getting hit on?
That's our carry forward.
We already cleared on that? Well, thank you for your time, Board, and good luck with holding the reins tight. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
And as far as the pool goes, some of us are very blessed to have some and some of us are not. And I dip a lot in that pool and I enjoy it. I want to thank you for keeping up and everything out there. New chairs are great. I didn't propose the cons on the new chairs, but it worked out. Thanks again, Board, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to the board?
Move that we close the public hearing, Madam Chairman?
Okay, I have a motion to close the public hearing. I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Public hearing is closed. And now I need a motion for the Resolution twenty seventeen eighteen, that is consideration of adopting the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget.
So move?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, it's four to one. Mrs. Flaherty was opposed. Okay, and now we have Resolution twenty seventeen nineteen imposing special assessments and certifying the assessment rule.
So move?
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Discussion?
Okay.
I would just ask that, and as I ask every year when I was out there in the audience.
Got it.
Please attach Exhibit A and B. Exhibits A and B never show up on that document. Other than that, I'm totally for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Mrs. Flaherty is opposed. Four to one, passes. All right, that leaves us to six D, which is consideration of approval of fiscal year two thousand eighteen board meeting schedule. I'll just start by saying there was two holidays that I just want to bring attention to for the board to see if we want to change dates before we actually advertise this, is July fourth. Our meeting would be on the fifth, which is the following day. Lots of people take vacations. I'll be here, but I don't know about the rest of you. And Easter is actually on April Fool's Day this year. So that, so is there any, just is there any dates that we'd like to change?
I, I looked at them and checked them all and I didn't have any conflict, at least at this time.
I would just say if he couldn't hear.
Right. I think it was because all the people getting up and leaving. I think that's what it was.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Doug, a second?
Second.
Okay. We have our meeting date scheduled for next fiscal year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I was waiting. And that brings us to supervisor comments. And I'm going to actually start with myself this time because I'd like to introduce the board to the person that we put on the Stony Brook Advisory Committee at the last meeting. If you would come to the podium and just introduce yourself to the rest of the board members.
Angela Sullivan, one-two-five-six-zero Jumpstone Court. I've been living in Stony Brook for the past couple of years. Tried to be as involved as I could in the community activities and very pleased to be able to attend these meetings. This is my first year, even though I attend all of the Stony Brook meetings. So looking forward to learning a lot about Gateway Services and being even more involved in Stony Brook.
Anybody have any questions for Angela? Thank you very much for considering being on the committee. And with that, I'll start with Mrs. Flaherty.
The only comment I have is I want to thank Mike and Elle for putting together those contracts that we're trying to do for landscaping that we've been working on and we're still working on so that they will come to the board eventually to get approval. Thank you. Mr. Guy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to continue my reiteration that I very much enjoy working with this board even though we don't agree on every single thing. We have learned to be agreeable and it's, it's very nice working.
Thank you. Mr. Banks?
It's nice to be back.
Mr. Tinkle?
I had a couple of things. One, got a meeting tentatively set and hope Mike can be available. Bentley Electric's going to be in here Monday morning to go over the, all the electrical costs. And then just for everybody, what we're waiting for is the lights, product, equipment to come in for the lights up on Griffin Drive. So that's that. The South, we had the meeting with South Florida Water Management District and you heard some of it. The issue was just to make sure that we have clarification on it. They do not. They being South Florida Water Management District do not have an engineering issue relative to the, what I want to call it, obstruction in the middle of the flowway.
The stripe.
The, the stripe, Casella and Karina. They do not have an objection to that. They are not going to get in to any kind of a dogfight over aesthetics. That's between us and them. But afterwards, we had the discussion outside and one of the issues that we, and we didn't get a chance or opportunity to do it today, but we would like to know and hear WCI Lennar's, what their idea was of how we're going to maintain and operate this when it drops, like it did this past year, and we had that ugly-looking sandbar going down the middle and what happens when it's got weeds on it. We don't have the people with the boats that can get to it and it's going to look ugly and, oh, no, 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 no. So I'd like to have a response from Lennar, WCI. What was your intent when you designed it this way? And that might lead to monetary settlement. The other one was the issue of the quitclaim deeds. They asked us to verify with them, and I did at the break, was that a Scribner's error that they just included all of the common areas which would have gone to the master association normally, like all of your HOAs have, have common areas. Well, they transferred all of those over, which is no problem, but they threw in two wetlands. And the permit, as they read to us at that meeting, required South Florida Waters' permits approval to do that. So I just gave them an opportunity to say that they made a mistake. And then the last one was the outstanding permits, and this is a, one that they've been on us for a long time. They gave us a list of sixty-seven pages of permits that they would like to have an answer in for us to start working on. And at the next meeting, I think we need to have that on the agenda to talk about to what extent do we need to have a proposal from Tony and a proposal from, I guess, Tetra Tech to do the work to start getting these permits terminated as far as they're concerned and get them off the hook. They're, they're not happy about it. They did not and could not answer one question. And that was, we let them know that we have some communities that was created here in this community or in this development where the developer's gone belly up and/or he's gone and engineers have belly up and they're gone. What do we do to get the certifications of the developer and the engineer when they're not around? While they didn't say that it's your problem, you could read between the lines. It's our problem. So we got to figure out how to address that.
Tetra Tech had a spreadsheet of all of these and what, and what state they were in. And it's been a while since it's been brought to the business. So we need to, we need to revitalize.
Well, remember, we sent, this issue, three years ago is about right. We sent that letter out to all these developers and all the engineers.
Yes.
And it just kind of went, nothing. We're bringing it back up again.
They did a matrix, I think Tetra Tech did a matrix.
Yes, they did.
So we need to get proposals from both Tony and Tetra Tech on what we're looking at to try to wrap this up. And then the last one, I don't know what the other board members did, but we were asked at the last meeting afterwards. And next time, I'm not going to second guess our district manager. He was right, I was wrong. We.
Whoa, wait a minute. I want you to repeat that.
Here, this is second microphone right here.
What he means is he was less wrong.
Marilyn, that was a six forty.
Less right, less right.
I want to condition that. That's my only one through the end of the year, so.
Want me to mention to Marilyn it's at the five forty-one mark of the meeting?
I went in and I was immensely disappointed at the fifty or sixty pages of plan sheets I saw that he had prepared on this landscaping project. I was expecting to go in and see maybe what's there now and his vision for what's going to be there. Forty-five, fifty pages of nothing more than what we have out there with a camera put on piece of paper with a description which had typographical errors and in some cases wasn't even what we're looking at. And then critiquing, critiquing our various HOA's entrances that aren't even a part of the project. So if there were, we were in the meeting or we'll address it the next time, my motion will be, let's go back to the drawing board. And again, I apologize, Mr. Chris, for not taking your advice. It was a joke. I don't know if the rest of you looked at it, but it was honestly a joke.
But I will make sure I do before the next meeting.
I hope we didn't pay more than a dollar two ninety-eight for that.
Well, I do remember Chris speaking about that in one of the meetings. And I think we're, we kind of instructed Chris to see if he could work through it. But if it's, we're at a point of diminished return or no return, then let's action that and let's cut.
That's, that's what I'd like to do. Action that at the next meeting. That's all I had. Thank you.
Move adjournment at five forty-four.
Adjournment at five forty-four. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Bill. The idea.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. That's a, that's a great idea. That's a great idea. Thank you for staying on top of that. That'd be nice. Doug? You do need to talk to Scott because here, what's going to happen is Monday night, the board meeting, the HOA board is going to vote whether to fine you for the hundred and fifty dollars. And then it will go to the fighting committee on September two, when you could fight the fine.
Yeah, so even though, I didn't really pay to know what day it was, so it was put out two days and then it was picked up. So there is no.
I don't know where, right. I don't know where he came up with the, the fine amendment. But do talk to him. Call Scott and see if he, if he, you know. Yep.